I gotcha. Welcome to Yukon City Council, Yukon Municipal Authority. It is June seventh, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. We're in the council chambers here at twelve South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. We'll start tonight with Pastor George Sam Cuddy from New Life Church giving our invocation, which will be followed by the flag salute. Pastor?
Would you all join me in prayer? Lord Jesus, we thank you for another day in our life, and here we are gathered in the city council meeting. We ask your special blessing upon the mayor, vice chair, and all the council members and all those who are present. Oh, God, we thank you for the peace and the joy we enjoy here in our city, and we pray that whatever happens here in this council meeting, we ask your wisdom and understanding to all of them, oh God, to do the right thing for the citizens of Yukon. Father, we pray for our nation going through so much trouble and so many ways. But we thank you at the same time. Our city is in, in, in a shape where we have peace and joy, and we pray that that will continue in our city and in our state, oh God. We place each item, whatever the agenda here in the council meeting, to be the blessing for the community and the citizens, oh God. Anything happen here, oh God, we place for your glory and for the blessing of the city. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Sam Cuddy. All right, roll call.
Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Yonda.
Here.
Gilliland.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
We have no presentations or proclamations. Do we have any visitors tonight?
Uh, no requests, Madam Mayor.
All right, we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. B. Payment of material claims in the amount of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred, two dollars and eighteen cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten. Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item two A. Consider approving Resolution YMA two thousand twenty-two dash oh one, a resolution approving the Yukon Municipal Authority Oklahoma budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three, and establishing budget amendment authority. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Okay, we will now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. B. Payment of material claims in the amount of five hundred, ten thousand, one hundred, thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. C. Pursuant to the agreement regarding the Main Street mural approved January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Appoint Tammy Kretschmar, the city manager, a staff person to oversee project and approve final artwork. D. Accept the resignation of Mike McKee and the appointment of Ken Smith to Ward Two Board of Adjustment seat, as recommended by Mayor Shelley Selby. E. Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, seven P M. In the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item two, Reports of Boards, Commission, and City Officials. Right, thank you. Item three, Consider Approving or Amending and Approving a Letter Requesting the Proposed De-Annexation of Wilshire Boulevard by the City of Yukon and Annexation by the City of Oklahoma City. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Anyone?
I, I have some questions. If we could go back.
Do we have to motion at first?
We got a motion.
Oh, I was asking if somebody had a second. Okay.
Oh, I thought you seconded.
I seconded. I never get to do that. Okay. Now, discussion. Go ahead.
I just wanted to go back.
So excited.
Historically, just a little bit, and make sure I understand some of the history on that, on that road, as far as what repairs Yukon has done and where they start and end, uh, in, in, in recent days. Is there somebody that can explain that to us?
Yes, sir. The city of Yukon and the county and Oklahoma City have worked jointly to work on Richland to Eleventh Street. There was also a new bridge put in during that section. To my knowledge, it's been years since anything has been done east of Eleventh Street.
And then west of Eleventh Street, did Yukon sort of lead the way financially for that, or was it truly a joint?
No, it was split. It was a joint.
Okay.
The, the county only provides labor. They don't pay for supplies or materials. So they did their part, but then the rest of the, uh, balance was split between Oklahoma City and Yukon.
And that was one of our capital improvement projects?
Yes. It was, I believe it was on the bonds.
You remember which year that was?
No, sir.
I don't either.
A couple of years ago.
I was gonna say, I think it was my second year. Jeff, were you in office?
I think so.
Okay.
And traditionally, that would be the expectation, I guess, is that we would have the cost because we own are responsible for half the road, and Oklahoma City is responsible for half the road.
Yes, sir.
And currently, Oklahoma City has funds to replace the remaining, is it five miles? From Eleventh Street to the east?
Yes, they do.
And if if we don't D N X, what would be our options to see that road repaired in the near future, meaning two to three years from now?
Ordinarily, the county would again supply the labor. Uh, they would not pay for any materials or supplies. Whether or not they would pay some of their ARPA funds towards the project, I can't answer that. We, the city of Yukon does have some money that's going to be coming in that we overpaid for the Frisco interchange. I don't know the amount. We thought that it was around a million, between nine hundred thousand and a million dollars. But I don't know when we will get that money from ODOT, but they are aware of it. I don't believe we will have enough money left in the bonds because with the excess that we whatever excess we have in there, uh, for the bonds, we're gonna try to do Wagner Road east of Yukon Parkway. So, um, we're just hoping to get that money back from ODOT, but I don't know when that's gonna be or how much it's gonna be.
And we're understanding the current costs on Wilshire would be about one million per mile. Is that accurate or close to accurate?
They've already gone out for the bids. I believe the portion. Mitch, do you have those? Three point six? Two point six.
From eleventh to?
To where? To Sarah Road.
It's much more manageable than.
But wasn't that also like a special price because they're doing multiples, and so they got a really good price? If we did it on our own, it would probably cost more. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I'd just like to say Wilshire has probably been on my bucket list ever since I've been on the city council, which has been quite a few years. And no one wants it fixed more than me, but it's not about me. It's about the citizens that I represent. And I have listened to their voices, and I have heard from many of you multiple times. And I feel like that their voice and is, needs to be heard and, uh, that their, um, property and every, and their rights are not jeopardized.
That is, that is also the, the point where I'm, I see the positives that can come out of the de-annexation. And I can't say anyone that I've heard from is wrong. Their points are all good for and against. I've just heard way more from the people who are against than the people who are for it.
So what we have before us is we can approve the entire de-annexation for Oklahoma City, for them to take it over. We can go for a partial, just do it in that strip in front of Mr. Funk's house, or do nothing. Those are our three different options that we have that we can, we can vote no on the de-annexation. And it is, it is a very hard decision because, as you said, it is a five million dollar gift. But with that comes a lot of our residents, their rights. And so we have to weigh what, what is best for our citizens, for our community. For our community, I see that we get a road fix for five million dollars. But at what cost? Anyone else?
Could we table this and visit with the county and see if they were willing to throw in some of their ARPA funds and then revisit this?
This morning, he talked a little bit. What was your take on that? We had legislative breakfast and our update from our county commissioner.
The current ARPA funds are really for stormwater drainage, water and sewer, and there's some other things. But to my knowledge, none of the ARPA funds are directly to road improvements, per se. Now, there is future monies coming out, but I, they're gonna be very competitive, and I don't know what kind of, uh, what kind of, uh, plans. A lot of times, it has to do with the amount of traffic. Uh, somebody has to be hurt a lot, a lot of right angle accidents before we can even get a lot of the money. The bigger cities suck that up quicker because they have more traffic, more accidents, more issues. So.
And then there's a special fund for those cities that are five thousand and under, and so those of us in the middle don't get those funds. And so we have to work a little harder and be a little more creative. That's my frustration with ACOG.
So I want to clarify that the whole project from eleventh to Sarah should be around two point six?
Two point six is what Oklahoma City came up with because they're doing multiple miles. They get a discount. The more work they do, they can buy the material a lot cheaper. The less the project, the materials go higher. But one of the things that, they prebid this, but the issues that we're having, you see what happened to go, gas prices right now? They've got those tied up right now for the projects, but if we go out to bid today, that oil cost is gonna be significantly higher because you've seen that when you come in today, that fuel keeps going up. So oil's the product that they use for asphalt.
And we wouldn't be able to go in with them on the current bids?
Right now, the current bid for the, from, like I said, eleventh street to Sarah Road for our portion, it's, it's two point six, which is significantly cheaper than what we could do, but they're doing a lot of different things than what we're gonna do.
Is it even feasible or legal to reimburse? To pay some portion and reimburse Oklahoma City over a period of time? I'm not sure if that's even an, uh, an option.
Normally, as a project is, uh, invoice, we're supposed to pay our share at that time.
Didn't we run into a scenario with, on Frisco Road where we paid and we were supposed to get a reimbursement from Oklahoma City? Maybe it wasn't Frisco, but it was.
Uh, yeah, we, we did not get a reimbursement from Oklahoma City.
Were we supposed to?
It was a handshake.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
We haven't talked to them to see if they'd finance this out, if that's what you're asking. A payment plan or pay a portion the next three years. We have not discussed that with them, and I don't know if that's an option because normally those funds have to be expended within that budget year. And I'm not for sure if this is bonds or what they're using or sales tax. I don't know how they're funding it, so depending on how they're funding it, could be interesting.
Is it normal to go out for bids and everything before you have it approved?
We, well, what they were doing is so they knew their cost when the discussion was started. Like I said, they're doing multiple miles, and I think the county's working with them to stabilize in the base. And they're providing the labor, but they.
What, what is their timeline then for those? I mean, just if, if it was all D N X and, and then N X.
My understanding, they're ready to go.
Well, but what does that, do you know what that means, like calendar wise?
Weather has a lot to affect on that, but my understanding, it, they have several miles they're working on right now, and they're ready to go on this as quick as they can. So I would say within the next three months or a little bit longer, they would be starting on the project.
What would be our timeline on the, uh, reimbursement that you mentioned a few minutes ago?
I don't have a timeline. We're waiting on ODOT.
Would, would we know the actual number at some point and then just kind of wait on the?
Yes.
The funds? Do you know when we might know that actual number?
But you, do you assume it's around nine hundred thousand?
We're waiting for the audit. That's what Tammy was talking about. It, it's, it's quite a process. If you remember right, on phase one on Highway four, it took us forever to figure out what we owed them. I mean, the road was done before we even started paying the state, the, some of the monies that we owed them.
But even if we got that reimbursement today, we'd still be lacking one point six million because do we?
Where, that'd be a split. We would be splitting that with them.
Right. Oh, that, so we'd only get like half a million?
One point three of that would be ours.
Okay.
And then nine hundred, if we get that, so we'd be four hundred.
Yeah.
Short.
The reason ours was higher, like Wagner Road on the east end, the city engineer, they talked about bringing it up out of the water with the concrete because it floods on that east end. So we were gonna do some concrete with some asphalt like we did Wagner. But Oklahoma City's doing all asphalt because they believe they can take care of their issues with that.
So would that be an option to do it the other way if we were doing it ourselves?
Well, right now, half the road's ours, half the road's theirs, so.
And they're not willing to veg on that price, not to do it a different way?
Well, the way they're doing it is be more cost efficient for us.
For us.
I, I, I think I would encourage us to, as Mr. Zimmerman suggested, table it and have more conversations with Oklahoma City as far as possible partnership and the funding. Of course, we don't want to delay too long, but I think that might be valuable information moving forward. I mean, the, the road, the road needs to be done. We, I mean, it, it just does need to be done, but we're, but I'm not willing to, um, vote against the, the people who are gonna be affected the most or impacted the most. I mean, just to be upfront about where, where I stand, but, um, but we, we, we need a fair way to do it, and if, if we don't have money at the moment, we, well, maybe we need a plan. I, I, I would agree with Mr. Zimmerman on, on tabling or postponing of that.
If you table the motion, you'll need to bring it back at the next meeting.
Very next meeting?
Yeah. If you postpone it, you can bring it back at a later day.
At a later day, so postpone it would be the rest. You know, do we need to have more conversations, or do we go with the fact that, that the residents don't want this de-annexed?
Well, I, and I think by having more discussion, we might hopefully, not guaranteed, but maybe get to where we can not de-annex it, but also have a path to getting the road done. That may not happen. It may be impossible to, to do both.
And Oklahoma City may not wait.
True.
Much longer. They've been waiting and they, um, so, so we need a new.
Do we have a ti, does Oklahoma City have a timeline that they?
They want to start it now.
They want to start it now, but if we, if we wait, are they? Is there any we're not gonna do it type scenario?
Probably what we need to do to city manager, and I need to go ahead and make contact with Oklahoma City and go sit down with them, discuss options so she can bring the options back to you. That's probably the best plan. We're gonna meet with city staff at Oklahoma City.
I just don't see the, the de-annexing is the answer. I just.
Right.
I just don't.
We need either come up with our half of the money or not do it, but we can't pull money out of the air. We're not the federal government. So. So we, uh, we have to earn ours.
Shelley, that's your job to go find out how to do it.
That, I will, I will. You know, they just print more. I'm sorry, I was a little sidebar. Okay. Can't you speak?
And she needs to come to the podium.
Oh, you need to come to the podium, though.
Name and.
Name and address, please.
Thirteen four sixty, West Wilshire. Um, I did have a conversation with, uh, Hader, Mr. Hader, and he said that he would be willing to have a conversation with you guys about that ARPA funds. Um, because I told him that Bradley Carter told me at this last meeting that our part was only one million because he kept saying Yukon only needs to come up with one million, but that wasn't what you guys were getting. So, you know, and then he said, well, if it's one million, he was going to talk to someone. I, I don't know if it was the district attorney or who would legally be able to advise him whether he could donate some of that ARPA money if it was just gonna be one million. So I did have that conversation with him. If we got our part down to four hundred thousand, maybe Mr. Funk could be willing to pitch in or something.
I like that idea.
If he's that gung ho about getting that done, it'd be a great donation to the city.
Thing with ARPA funds is that we cannot count until they're absolutely said that we get them.
Right.
Because right now, they're being held, um, and they're not letting any of those funds be released. And so we can say they're gonna release them to, but until they actually do it, we can count on them.
But he said he would be willing to have that discussion with the city. So, okay?
Okay. So we can change this to someone make a motion to postpone this?
I'll make a motion to postpone the de-annexation of Wilshire Boulevard for the moment.
And I'll second it.
Actually, the agenda item was just to approve a letter about it, so there's not.
So we just need to vote no on approving that letter?
Or, or to postpone.
The letter. So we need to re-uh, phrase it to postpone?
Mr. Wooten may want to amend his.
I'll amend it. A motion to postpone the letter requesting.
Consideration.
Consideration of.
Okay. Can we add a second?
I'll second.
Right. Any more discussion? We're trying to work this together, okay? Both sides. All right. Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Right, item four, Consider Approving Resolution twenty-two dash oh five, a resolution approving the City of Yukon, Oklahoma budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three, and establishing a budget amendment authority. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This, this is all the same as our meeting. Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
Right. Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item number five, Consider Approving the Purchase of Supplies from Pioneer Supply to Lower Two Well Lines Located at Fifteenth Street and Check Hall Road Due to Oklahoma City's Road Expansion Project in an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda? Excuse me, Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item six, Consider Approving a Renewal Contract with Patford EMS for a Term Ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as recommended by the fire chief. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item number seven, Consider Approving the Release of the Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit in the Amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the paving, drainage, water, and sewer public improvements to serve River Mesa Phase Three located at a part of River Mesa addition, approximately eleven point oh two acres, being a part of the northeast fourth of section sixteen, T, uh, twelve N, R five W, I M, Canadian County, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item eight, Consider Accepting the Street and Storm Drain Improvements and Place the Maintenance Bond Into Effect to Serve River Mesa Phase Three Located in the vicinity of southwest of East Wagner Road, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item nine, Consider Accepting the Waterline Improvements and Place the Maintenance Bond Into Effect to Serve River Mesa Phase Three Located in the vicinity of southwest of East Wagner Road, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item ten, Consider Accepting the Sanitary Sewer Improvements and Place the Maintenance Bond Into Effect to Serve River Mesa Phase Three Located in the vicinity of southwest of East Wagner Road, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay, we're done with River Mesa. Item number eleven, Consider Approving the Renewal of the Enter-Governmental Agreement with Oklahoma City for the Regional Household Hazard Waste Collection Program for the term between July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item twelve, Consider Approving an Orchestra Service Agreement with the Oklahoma Philharmonic Society Incorporated for the Annual Freedom Fest Concert at the Chisholm Trail Park gazebo in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item thirteen, Consider Approving T E I M Design to Evaluate Parkland Lift Station Located at Northwest Tenth Street and South Cornwell Drive to Determine if the Existing Lift Station is Adequate to Meet the Flows and Allow Team to Identify the Required Improvements Not to Exceed Six Thousand Eight Hundred Dollars, as Recommended by the City Engineer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Fourteen, Consider Approving the Agreement with Turn Pro for the Maintenance of the Six City Ponds From March Through November in the Amount of eight hundred, eighteen dollars per month, as Recommended by the Park Maintenance Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item fifteen, Consider Approving Resolution twenty-two dash oh six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, Declaring Its Intentions to Claim the Standard Allowance of Ten Million Dollars Not to Exceed the Total Award Allocation for the City of Yukon From the American Rescue Plan Act Recovery Fund Funds As Lost Revenue to Use as the Provision of General Government Services, as Recommended by the City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item sixteen, consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council and convene into executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma statutes titled twenty-five, section three oh seven B four, for confidential communications from the city attorney regarding the pending actions styled Williams Family Investment LLC and Oklahoma Limited Liability Company plaintiff versus city of Yukon and Oklahoma Municipal Corporation. Case number C B two oh dash two oh two one dash two nine four and take appropriate actions in open session. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess for executive session. I need for, um, Ms. Kretschmeyer, for Mr. Reinhardt, for Mitch and for Doug to come with us. It's just, it's just family now. Oh, it's cold in here.
Yes, it is. And it was hot in there.
I was saying, what did y'all do out here to make it so cold? We're gonna hang on just a minute, give him a little, a moment.
Okay. We'll have it somewhere.
Thank you. All right. Item seventeen, consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'd like now to read the minutes of the executive session while an executive session only.
Madam Mayor, we need to take a vote on it.
Oh, sorry. Ready to get out of here, it's cold. Uh, no discussion, let's vote, sorry.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Now I would like to read the minutes of the executive session. While an executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken and no votes were cast.
I make a motion to give attorney Roger Reinhardt the authority to continue negotiations with the Williams Family Investments LLC.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. All right. Any new business?
Done tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, it's time for our council discussion. We'll start with Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, I just hope everyone has a safe and, um, enjoyable summer.
Okay, Councilman Wooten?
I'll second that.
All right, Councilman Zimmerman?
I just encourage anybody if they're still watching, go take advantage of some of our perks programs and library programs and stuff for the kids this summer.
Okay, Councilman Gilliland?
Nothing further than that.
All right, well, I do have a few things unfortunately, uh, to make us last a little bit longer. Don't forget the concert in the park, Irv Wagner's Jazz Combo. It's this Thursday, June ninth, from seven to eight thirty. It's free. If you've never been to one of those, it is just the best hometown feeling. It'll be Steve Crossley and Jerry Wilson on the sixteenth, but then also mark your calendars for June eighteenth, we have the Route sixty-six triple tour. This is a day, it's free. We start in War Acres with that morning and they have a car show and then we move to Bethany where they're going to have, um, a citywide garage sale and again a car show. And then we move here to the great city of Yukon where we're gonna have a Rockabilly concert, which is totally free, and a car show downtown. And you're gonna wanna come to that and just spend the evening, bring your lawn chair and enjoy that night. And then, don't forget the turtle race on June tenth. I have been asked to say, if you do go find a turtle, please return it to its habitat when you're finished. Don't just let it loose, but that is not humane to the turtles. So please take care of that. Also, I'd like to thank Mike McKee for adjustments for his, uh, service to our city. I appreciate you, Mike. Thanks for all you do. Our prayers are with you. And then I'd like to thank Ken Smith for taking on, um, that position. Make the most of your tomorrows, be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.